Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would you please rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To the two young men that just walked in, are you here for a class?
No, we're here. We're here, we're Boy Scouts, and there's a citizenship and a community badge, and if you could kindly let us sit in on the meeting so we may take some time to understand what's going on in our community.
Okay.
Awesome.
Could we have your name, please, for the record?
Gentlemen, come up here, please. It's much easier.
Thank you for being here. This is a good thing, don't worry.
Go to the podium, and then you can give us your name.
I am Brendan Sanders.
Talking into the microphone.
I am Brendan Sanders.
How do you spell that last name, Brendan?
Welcome, Brendan.
Thank you.
And what troop are you with?
256.
Into the microphone.
256.
256, okay. Young man?
Hello, my name is Peter Sanders. It's spelled S-A-N-D-E-R-S, just like his. I'm his twin brother, and we are with troop 256.
256, okay. Thank you. And you're here for your badge, correct?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Welcome, welcome.
Very well. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. Trustee Busino?
Here.
Trustee Kryzminski?
Here.
Trustee Nevers?
Present.
Trustee Smith?
Here.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Here.
Clerk Posey here. Supervisor Dunn?
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you.
Approval of the agenda items, with any corrections, deletions, or additions. Ms. Posey, I think we have a couple?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. We have a proposed add-on, 12A, request authorization to replace drainage culvert at 2044421 Mile Road. 21, proposed add-on, request to approve Macomb Township wireless facilities and right-of-way ordinance. And 4A was added for the approval of closed-session meeting minutes from March 27, 2019.
Thank you. Any others?
Hearing none, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the corrections.
Support.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue, seconded by Mr. Busino, to approve the amended agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. The approval of the bills, as usual, there are two bill runs. If anyone wishes to remove an item, please indicate so at this time.
Madam Chair, if there are no issues with either bill run, I move that we approve both.
Motion by Ms. Nevers, seconded by Ms. Posey, to authorize payment of both bill runs. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Next, we have approval of the meeting minutes from March 27. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes?
Seeing none, I move that we approve the meeting minutes from March 27, 2019.
Motion by Ms. Posey.
Support.
Seconded by Mr. Busino, to approve the minutes. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. And then we have the approval of the closed-session minutes. Is there a motion to approve those?
I will make a motion to approve the closed-session meeting minutes, as presented.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Posey, to approve the closed-session minutes from March 27. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. The consent agenda item, our routine matters that frequently come before the Board. If you wish to discuss an item on the consent, please indicate so at this time.
Madam Chair, hearing nothing, I move on the consent agenda items, as presented.
Motion by Mr. Kryzminski.
Support.
Seconded by Ms. Posey, to approve the consent agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Next, we have public comments, and this is on agenda items only. If you wish to speak to the Board, please come to the podium, state your name. Remember, there's a three-minute time limit.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Western. I'm speaking to item number 16, the request to extend the sidewalk replacement bid. If I understand correctly, this contract was originally awarded to Fernandy &amp; Sons in August of 2017. We had no idea how much it would do to bring neighbors together, but by the fall of 2017, the neighbors were gathered in front of their houses to ask each other, "Why are there big red Xs on my sidewalk?" Help us to understand. The township does not do the original construction of sidewalks in the interior of subdivisions. But you are assuming the responsibility for maintenance and repair of those sidewalks going forward. And one of my questions is, are you going to maintain and repair all of the sidewalks in the township for an extended period of time? I can find no other local township that does this. They do identify sidewalks needing to be repaired, and then they inform the property owners of the need. The residents can take care of the repairs themselves. Sometimes the township may have a contractor the resident can hire at a lower rate than what the resident themselves could get. There are questions about the qualifications of the persons who put those red Xs on sidewalks, who marked them all for repairs. Some seem marked without reason, while obvious trip hazards are not marked at all. Were the persons who marked the sidewalks township employees? And what was their training to carry out these duties? Tonight, we hope to hear from you the criteria you are using to consider extending this contract. There was no information in the packet that explained, so I had a lot of questions. Some of you got email from me with my list of questions. Some of those, I'll take the time to point out tonight. What percentage of the originally identified work has already been completed? What percentage of the complaints about damages have been fully resolved? Are you going to resurvey and re-mark any portions of the township before resuming this work? Some of those original Xs are long gone, and some creative people have added their own. Most importantly, my understanding is that you have paid Fernandy &amp; Sons over $2.3 million since January 2018. Does that not already exceed the amount of this contract? How much more are you planning to pay them? Look forward to your answers tonight. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? Agenda items only. Very well, I see no one. Under new business from the supervisor's office is a request to reappoint Mr. Michael Letito to the Clinton-McComb Public Library Board, with the term ending 4/30/2023. Larry Neal, the director of the library, has expressed to me his desire to continue with the same board members during the construction of the new north branch. The message from Ms. Silda, which was included in your packet, who is the vice president of the Board, and my experience with Mr. Letito, currently the president, leads me to request this reappointment. If you have any questions, I can answer them.
Madam Chair, hearing none, I will go with the appointment, the reappointment of Mr. Letito, as you requested.
Support. Motion by Mr. Kryzminski, supported by Mr. Busino, to reappoint Mr. Michael Letito to the Clinton-McComb Public Library Board, with his term ending April 30, 2023. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Next is a request to have brine applications applied to the remaining gravel roads in the township. Mr. Van Tiflin gave me a tally of the miles of road, and we have 4.8 miles of road that is gravel that would need this brine application. And speaking with Ms. Goodhue, who used to live on a dirt road, she has informed us in the past that the brine application, which was administered by the Road Maintenance Corporation, lasted longer than the one supplied by McComb County. Now, we do get two free applications. Any others would have to be paid, and it would either be the Department of Roads or Road Maintenance Corporation. If you have any questions, I'll try and answer.
Madam Chair, on the recommendation yourself, I will go with your recommendations.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Kryzminski.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Nevers, to authorize Road Maintenance Corporation to provide any additional applications. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Next, we have the Engineering Department requesting approval of the updated 10-year pathway gap closure master plan. Mr. Van Tiflin?
Yes, Madam Chair, personal members of the Board. Last year, the Township Board authorized our department to reevaluate the 10-year sidewalk gap closure program, to make sure that we had 10 years' worth of projects that we were kind of programming, so that we would have a good program every year to spend that million dollars that the Board had authorized for the closure of gaps in our pathway system. This master plan update recognizes that we've had some development since the original master plan was done. We also have committed to some roadwork that pathways are associated with those, especially road widening projects. The federal government requires that as part of the funding. So obviously, we want to make sure those aren't included in our program, because those are going to be done as part of a separate project. So we have reevaluated. Again, just to remind everybody, we're focusing on the areas around the schools, the commercial areas, and the township parks, leading kind of radially out from those locations, so that we're connecting as many of the residential areas to those areas as possible, as quickly as possible, using the funding that we have. So on March 28, the Road Committee met to review the program, the 10-year program that we put together. Attached in the Board Packet is a copy of all, there's actually 11 years in here, but one of them is the one that the Board authorized construction for this year. So we've included that, so everybody understands what we're doing this year and how it relates to everything else that's programmed for the next 10 years. So Road Committee met, and are recommending the Township Board adopt the program as it was submitted in the Board Packet. Happy to answer any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Van Tiflin?
Madam Supervisor, I would just like to touch on a few things. I've reviewed and studied these maps extensively since we received them, and I think there's some, a lot of positive things that are happening throughout this plan, and I think you're being very generous in not over-accelerating what we are going to accomplish in these 10-year plans. In 2019 alone, we, the plan that we have allows residents to walk to school, the school complex, and Waldenberg Park, all down from 21 Mile Road. It also will connect 21 Mile Road, you can walk to the Lance Cruz North High School and Middle School, and also 22 Mile Road to Hayes connects to Commercial and almost to Garfield. Also, on 22 Mile Road, they'll connect us to schools. It'll cross, you can cross Heinrich and get to 21 Mile Road and Waldenberg. In 2020, there will be walking between 23 and 24 Mile Road on Romeo Plank, which connects churches, schools, and Commercial. The north side of 21 Mile Road, east of Card, connects to Commercial, Dakota School Complex, and Waldenberg. On the east side of Card, south of 21 Mile Road, will connect to all those things as well. On 21 and Garfield, the subdivisions from Hayes Road and east of Card will be uninterrupted on both sides, and connects the north side of 21 Mile Road with Garfield, with the bridge to allow Commercial and Waldenberg Park. So just in 19 and 20, we'll make a tremendous impact in the south side of the township. But then, when you're looking forward into 21 and 22, we still have a significant amount of work that needs to be done to connect that Lance Cruz School Complex, which I did drive over and take a look at, and there are no walkways to get the students in that area to a middle school. And when you do look at it, it is potentially a hazard for those children. There seems to be a safety concern, there's not even a crosswalk for kids in that area. Also, in 2021, we would connect all of 25 Mile Road from Hayes to McComb Corners Park, to Town Hall, and to the Trail Project that we recently moved to move forward with. In 2022, with the completion of 25 Mile Road, we will connect McComb Corners Park. Everyone can walk to the park from 25 Mile Road. It gets residents to Commercial at 26 and Romeo Plank, and connects all five of 25 Mile Road areas to the Trail Project, to include Town Hall, and eventually our park at 24 and Foss. So as I reviewed this project, and we're already in motion in 19 and 20, I asked Mr. Van Tiflin what we could do as a Board to expedite the progress in 21 and 22, because they're such crucial things that would bring this community together, and for public safety purposes. And what he had indicated is the Board has always in the past approved for a million dollars each year to get put towards these gap projects. But there's nothing stopping the Board from increasing that million dollars to more to expedite getting the community together on these sidewalk gaps. So I would like to, in the next motion, I believe, or in the next memo, Mr. Van Tiflin's asking for the million dollars based on this 10-year plan, but I would like to discuss with this Board of increasing it to 2 million, so that we can expedite these projects in 21 and 22, that will get so many of our residents to our parks and to all this development that we're planning to do right here in the Town Hall area. But I thank you for the plan. It's great. It's, I've seen the community on 21 Mile Road already that's utilizing the bridge and getting to Waldenberg Park. There are so many people out riding bikes, more than I've seen in the last five years. So I'm excited, and I would like to do anything as a Board member to try and expedite that.
Madam Chair, if I may. Jim, if we went on to this type of moving it up, is there companies out there capable of doing this for us because of this type of, you know, movement?
Yeah, the company that we had last year do the work, they were done in a couple of months. The company that is going to do the work this year, it might even be a month and a half. So, yeah, I think they're capable of doing more work, it's just a matter of telling them ahead of time when we bid the project what it is that we're going to include in that project. But, you know, what we try and do is have them start when the weather breaks in the spring, but make sure that everything is done prior to school, starting in late summer. So around Labor Day is when we typically would want the major construction done, and then maybe restoration work is done through September, when the weather is a little bit more conducive for growing grass.
The other question is, is that will there be enough of, will we have some problems in acquiring any easements that we'll be going across there?
Yes, that's going to be probably the hardest part of, if we were to double up the program, because there are a lot of easements. The, I think, next year's, the one that I'm proposing in the next item, we have quite a bit of right-of-way that, you know, we have already, it's platted, but there are a number of easements that we're going to have to get, so we're going to have to start that early. You know, that takes about a year to do. By the time you go through all the negotiations, prepare all the documents, and there are some that we have to go to condemnation, so legal has to get involved, and there's an entirely different process that is lengthy that you have to go through for that.
Okay. One other question is, is that whether or not Ms. Stacy Smith has enough money in the budget in order to move up a million dollars?
I've already confirmed that, Mr. Kryzminski. So I was just going to, I was going to mention that when he asks for the money that I've met with finance in the township, is in, has the availability to do that. I do have some suggestions on ways that we could gain some revenue to help support that increase, to get the sidewalks moving faster, so we can address that at the next agenda item, if you wish.
That's fine. I just wanted to make sure.
Well, Madam Chair, I just have a question, too. So in our original sidewalk plan, we had plans that, based on what our clerk just said, that we had plans that completed sidewalks before addressing walker, walking hazards for students to Lance Cruz Schools. Could we take some money from the proposed sidewalks, complete the walking hazards, and then discuss additional funding for those? Because I do have a concern if we are not, the original plan was going to complete some sidewalks and other places before it completed walking paths for children to Lance Cruz Schools. Could we move those funds first, and then talk about the other sidewalk plans?
Well-
Because I guess what I'm concerned about is our clerk just brought up a great point. She brought up that this plan did not include paths for these children to Lance Cruz Schools first. Why didn't it? I guess that is my question. I'm just going off what our clerk just said.
Actually, it does. And I'll get more into the details of next year's, what I'll call this coming year's program, but it's the 2021 construction program.
And when was the original plan made?
2015, I would say.
All right, so before, yeah, before I sat on the board. Thanks.
Yep, yep. So there were a number of areas that were identified. There was a study that the Board had authorized through, I think, U of M years ago, that kind of kicked this off, and then we did a master plan of how we were going to implement this. Occasionally, we do updates just to make sure that we're on track, that, you know, maybe something didn't come up. There's, every time a development happens in the township, there's a gap that's filled in or created. So you need to make sure that, you know, if you're getting the biggest bang for the buck, when you fill in a gap, that as many people as possible tied into the balance of the system, and you're not doing things, you know, out in the middle of nowhere. So, you know, it's really up to the Board. Originally, when, in 2015, when this was started, it was a half a million dollars. And we had done some estimating work, and found out that concrete prices had essentially doubled in recent years at that point, because construction had really taken off. The economy started back up again. And so, you know, we wanted to make sure that we weren't, you know, making our projects too small, that we were getting enough done every year. So the Board said, okay, instead of a half million dollars, we'll go to a million. And I think what the clerk is suggesting is that, at least for this one year, we go to 2 million, so that we can get some other projects done in other areas of the township. That, you know, these are focused on the schools, and not necessarily the parks, but the next-year program is focused on the parks, so we'll get both of them done, and they're in different areas of the township, so it's more spread out for the residents.
No, I get that. I love that clerk is concerned with the children walking to school, you know. That's my concern, of course, you know, I'm a school teacher, you know, so. So what I, but what I'm hearing is, okay, there was plans for other parts, didn't include the children walking to school, so now let's increase the budget to cover those kids walking to school, where originally why, if you understand my question, do you understand?
Yeah, let me try and address that. The Lance Cruz is what you're asking about. That complex, this will be, if the Board authorizes this, the third year in a row that we've done work in that area. We did work this year, there's work proposed for construction next year in 2020, and then we're going to return to that area in 2021. Then I've also got another program that would kick in to being in 2023, that would go all the way down to Hall Road. You know, there are a lot of easements that we have to do once you get down into Fairchild. It's a tight area, you know, you've got, you know, not, the right-of-way was not left in place to put the sidewalks in, so we've got a lot of individual parcels that we're going to have to get easements from. And to try and do that in one big project would be a lot, like Mr. Kryzminski said, easement acquisition becomes, you know, your biggest hurdle at that point. So we are focusing on the Lance Cruz, not, you know, we did the 21 and Heidenreich complex. We're now starting to radiate out to, you know, our school, you know, on Card Road, you know, south of 23, there's the Little Turtle and Shani. The, we're doing this year is Iroquois and the other school that's next to Wigan's. So, yeah, we're focusing on the other schools. The thing that kicked the whole thing off was a lot of the 21 and Heidenreich area. That was the obvious one that needed to be done.
Madam Chair, one more thing. I think this is all awesome. You know, we got money in the bank, you know, that came from the residents. I think it should serve the residents. I think all this is good conversation. But I did hear a comment that, you know, Stacy confirmed the money's in the budget. Where, what budget? Is it sidewalk budget? Is it general fund? Is it? There was a comment that we confirmed with Stacy that there was a million dollars in somewhere.
Go ahead, Stacy.
What's the confirmation with that of? I think this is great, by the way. I'm all for sidewalks. I just want to, you know, some comments were thrown out there, there was some confirmation we had this money.
The money for that sidewalk program comes out of the municipal street fund.
Okay.
But the money from the municipal street fund is contributed from the general fund. So ultimately, the general fund is covering the expenses.
Okay, okay.
And as far as the budget, we're working on next year's budget, so nothing's been approved yet. But that's what Ms. Posey and I were talking about the other day.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may finish my questioning. I wanted to thank you, Jim, for, you know, answering my questions, and also, Ms. Posey, I wanted to thank you for that. If you needed a support on adding that million dollars, it'd be more than happy to do that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Also, the reason for bringing this up and increasing the 2 million, Jim, you can support me on this, is that it takes two years to accomplish this. So even though, that's why it was the 2017 that we approved, that's getting done in 2019. If Mr. Van Tiflin doesn't have the available funds, if we don't increase the funds, he couldn't get to all those projects unless we approve it now, so he has the funds available to be able to move forward and expedite things when, while we have the opportunity to do so in 21 and 22. So I just wanted to add why we're focusing on increasing it now, so that he can be prepared for 21 and 22. That's all.
Okay, so Madam Chair, I'm confused. I thought Stacy just said this would be a next-year budget. But we're going to approve it tonight?
I don't know what the question is.
I thought that's what she just said. I thought she said this was going to be proposed in next year's budget, but now after-
Right. Mr. Van Tiflin would include it in his budget that we're working on right now, to have the million, extra million dollars available for him, so that he can do, work with the design companies to get this going.
The vast majority of the money would be used for construction in 2021. What we're talking about doing is kicking off the design. That would happen in all of this year, so we'd go through all the design permitting, approval process, and then next year would be the easement acquisition part of it. So that's when the Board gets all of the easements that are negotiated individually for them to approve, and then finance works with the Treasurer's Office to issue checks to the residents that we're getting the easements from. But it's the, you know, construction part of it, that's the major cost. So we're really talking about, the major portion of the work is going to be done from a budget standpoint in 2021.
How long does it take in the design process, Jim?
That will take most of this year to get done. Our goal would be to be able to turn over the easement documents to our easement acquisition person in about January, February of next year, so that she can spend the rest of that year getting, you know, acquiring all the easements that are necessary. For that big of a project, we want to give her those as soon as we can. If we can get them to her this fall, we'll try and do that, just so she can stay ahead.
Okay. Any other questions?
Madam Chair, I'm just going to make a comment. I would appreciate a little bit warning before I have to vote on a million dollar, million dollar anything, before, I just hear, I'm just hearing about it right now. You know, could we maybe table this for two weeks? Would that hurt the process if we table this until?
No.
You know, I'm being asked to vote on a million dollar upgrade on the spot, that I didn't know was coming, so.
What I would suggest is, if you're going to, if you're thinking about doing that for that one project, is adopt the plan, because that's not going to change anything.
That's true.
And then, and then the next item would get tabled until the next meeting, and we'd pull together the, whatever it is that-
Got to adopt the plan.
I'll adopt the plan, but there's a million dollar add-on, Roger.
No, there's not. We have to adopt the plan right now on this. She has to make the motion on whatever she's going to do. We're adopting only the plan of-
100% I'm in support of the plan, but not the 1 million dollar add-on that I didn't know about until right now.
It's not an add-on, Mr. Busino. I'll make a motion to approve the design work for the 2021 pathway gap closure program.
Support.
This is the approval of the master plan, correct?
10-year master plan.
Number nine, would I revise?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep.
Motion by Ms. Posey, seconded by- Motion by Ms. Posey, seconded by Mr. Kryzminski, to approve the updated pathway gap closure master plan. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Next, we have the design work for the 2021 pathway gap closure program. Mr. Van Tiflin.
Yes, ma'am. Chairperson, members of the board. As it stands right now, the, the program for the construction in 2021 would include the west side of Card Road between 22 and 23. Now, that would serve the Shawnee Elementary School and the Little Turtle. By that point, in 2021, that area of 23 Mile Road would also be completed, the widening, and so that sidewalk would then tie into the sidewalk that's going to be built along 23 Mile Road with the road widening. Second area is over on Fairchild, so the east side of Fairchild, between 21 Mile and the railroad tracks in the south end. We'd also include some sidewalks and the side streets that, in a crosswalk, that would allow kids to walk across Fairchild to get to the school complex. And then the last one is, was a request, actually from a resident. Apparently, the subdivision that is in the northeast corner of 25 Mile in Hayes, the bus stop for the kids is actually in subdivision to the east, across a property as well as the consumers' gas corridor. So, we're, we're proposing to fill that gap in as well. That's the way the, you know, this was put in your board packet. Obviously, there was a request to include the next year's program. If, if you want to, I can go through that. Okay. So, the 2022 that, that we're talking about doing in 2021 is along 25 Mile. So if you, last year, we completed the sidewalks from McComb Corners Park over to Luckman. That tied the subdivisions in the Luckman 25 area to the park. The board earlier this year authorized us to connect the pathway from the park to this complex here where the rec center and the town hall are. This would go west. So, there are some gaps from Luckman Road to the river, across the river to the, round about at 25 Mile, and then also over to Garfield Road. In theory, by this point, the round, the new roundabout would be in, on the west side by the party store, and that would have crosswalks associated with that. We would just tie into those, and then we'd go in all the directions, up and down Romeo Plank, Garfield, and 25 Mile that connect to the subdivisions. So essentially, everybody from almost Hayes Road over to Luckman would be able to get to McComb Corners Park and to this complex with one continuous sidewalk. So, that's, that's the, what we're talking about possibly adding to the 2021 program. You happy to answer any questions?
Thank you. Questions for-
Madam Chair, if I have just one. Jim, going, going east on 25, we cross, there's a bridge just coming out of McComb Corners, and then there's a farm, and then there's a sub after that. Are we including going through that, that particular, connecting and on there?
The, are you talking about the farmhouse that the park surrounds?
Uh, past that, past, past the-
We are looking at some different options. We may stay on the south side of the road and cross midway between Broughton and, and Luckman. We're, we're looking at a couple of different ways of doing that.
Okay, rather than-
The proposal that was before the board was to cross basically in front of Town Center Park. And that's fairly close to Broughton Road and that intersection, so we're thinking that it might be better to go at the half mile in between them and not have to worry about traffic associated with the intersection and people being distracted because of it. So, we're working out those details with the McComb County Department of Parks right now, how that would look and what we would have to do. It's the same thing that we would have, you know, we have to get answered by them at, on Fairchild, south of 21 Mile in front of that school complex, and getting the kids across the road. Right now, there's no light. If you, you know, look at the complex at Dakota, you know, they have lights. So those crossings can be, you know, done safely, so you got to put signage up and lighting and that kind of thing, so we're working out those details.
All right. Thank you, Mrs., Jim. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair, if I may. As I mentioned, I didn't just abruptly decide to go and try and add a million dollars onto the agenda. I was studying the maps and trying to expedite getting our community on the sidewalks and to our parks and schools safely. So what I did was try to, considered ways to generate revenue to compensate for the additional million dollars, although the township is in a position to cover the expense. So I checked with our assessor, and the township does own some land. We have at least three pieces of land that we've had from 2014, pot some of them from 2016, that we potentially had used for, maybe for parks or other things, and now we haven't really decided, or we've come across other properties that we've chosen to put these parks on. So we have the potential to sell three pieces of land that are, we could generate a significant amount of money in our general fund if we decide to sell these pieces of properties. So, I would like for us board members to get this information on the properties that we have and discuss the potential of having maybe the purchasing specialist put them on mitten, and see if we can get money for these properties, which is one way to generate some revenue. I also do have concerns with extending the sidewalk repair program. I, it looks like potentially if we were to extend the contract and speaking with our grounds and facilities manager, he would need to request an additional million going forward in the next budget, a million five, maybe even potentially. I do believe that, I've talked with Mr. Maher, that the township should have an ordinance on our sidewalk repair. We as a board need to make some decisions as to what qualifies the sidewalks for repair. There needs to be some regulations, and do we in fact need to be the ones paying for all these repairs going forward forever? It will cost the township millions of dollars. So, my proposal was to have Mr. Gelli finish out 2019 with the residents that are already expecting these repairs to be done, but for us to, as a board, to hold off on moving forward until we have an ordinance and some regulations and policies in place. So, that million dollars would potentially be available that could potentially have been budgeted for something else as well.
And Madam Chair-
Just, I'm not finished.
I'm sorry, you paused, I'm sorry.
Well, with those suggestions, it would generate revenue for the township, allow us to accomplish this project exponentially, which will increase our community getting outside. That's, that's all I have.
Just one comment. There is a committee that's looking at those properties right now, and we'll come to a decision soon and put them on the website for sale.
Excellent.
Okay.
And, and Madam Chair, all these are good ideas. I would just like this to be shared with every voting member of the board and not, when was all this shared? About selling properties and paying for sidewalks and add-ons? When, when was this shared?
Right now, we're at an open board meeting. That's when it's supposed to be shared, Tim. It's an open meeting.
Okay, seems like there's a lot of discussions going on. We, we have to vote with this, but, but-
Trustee Bassano, you at any time could initiate us going to the assessing department and finding out what township properties we have for sale to generate money. You can meet with the finance director at any time and ask her if we could budget it if you had these ideas. You can at any time do exactly what I was doing, which was my job. So I'm meeting with department heads, so that before I come to the board and propose to do such things, I have, I have checked with finance to make sure we have money. I have checked with Mr. Gelli to, to explain why I would want to put a halt on the program until we have an ordinance. And I have checked, worked with Mr. Van Tiflin extensively to accomplish these goals. You can do the same thing whenever you want.
Okay, so, do I have to, when I talk to people under you, do I have to ask permission to talk to them? Because that's happened in the past, where I've called them on the phone, tried to do exactly what you told me. Do my research, do my homework. They've been told, I can't talk to them because you've told them that.
Has, um-
I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying, it's so, is, is it okay that I, so I can now call department heads and ask them questions?
Um, we are talking about the pathway gap closure program. Let's get back to that first. Are there any motions?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the, to begin the design work for the 2021 pathway gap closure program by increasing it to two million dollars.
Support.
Motion by Ms. Posey, seconded by Mr. Kryzminski, to approve the design work as requested and add another million dollars to the total budget for these projects. All in favor?
Madam Chair, can we get a roll call vote in this?
Certainly. Roll call, please, Ms. Posey.
Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Kryzminski?
Yes.
Trustee Bassano?
No.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee, Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
This motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have the request to approve sanitary sewer diversion for Elite Corporate Park. Mr. Van Tiflin.
Yes, ma'am. Chairperson, members of the board. Elite Corporate Park is the piece of property that's developing behind the foam factory on 23 Mile between Garfield and Romeo Plank. They have a bit of an issue with one of their proposed building sites that doesn't have enough depth on the existing sewer that is intended to serve that part of the property, and they're asking that they be able to divert into a different sewer district. This one, the sewer district they want to go into is along 23 Mile. We've reviewed it, and we've had AW review it. We've reviewed it, we've gotten, we've gotten in touch with the water and sewer department, and everybody's recommending approval. You happy to answer any questions?
Thank you. Any questions? We've done these in the past.
Yes, we have.
Questions or motions?
Madam Chair, I'll move on this.
Motion by Mr. Kryzminski.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Nevers, to approve the sewer diversion for Elite Corporate Park. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Next, we have a request to approve the pathway gap abeyance for 49077 Fairchild. Mr. Van Tiflin.
Yes, ma'am. Chairperson, members of the board. This is, there's two pieces of property involved in this. They've applied to the assessing department for a property combination. This is in the northwest corner of 20, future 22 Mile and Fairchild. They want to combine the two pieces to build a garage. Our, our policy has been that when parcels are split or combined, they have to meet the ordinance with regard to pathways and sidewalks. So they will be installing a pathway along Fairchild in this area, but 22 Mile does not exist west of Fairchild. So, in these, you know, types of situations in the past, we have put those sidewalks into abeyance, so that when the road is built, we have the ability to call the abeyance in and have the pathway installed, instead of putting it there, and then it becomes a nuisance until the road's in. We're recommending approval. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions on the abeyance?
No, ma'am. This is more of an administrative thing, anyway. Madam Chair, a, a motion to, to go ahead and approve the pathway abeyance for property number 0824476012, and property 0824476013, and I want to thank our assessor for doing this.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Kryzminski, seconded by Ms. Posey, to approve the abeyance for 49077 Fairchild. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. The next one is the add-on. This is authorization to replace a drainage culvert at 2044421 Mile. Mr. Van Tiflin.
Yes, ma'am. Chairperson, members of the board. During our, the construction of our 2015 pathway gap closure program, which was in 2017, so it was a couple of years ago, this particular piece of property, 2044421 Mile, we installed the pathway in front of this property. There's a large, quite, a large asphalt driveway that is associated with, with the property. There was some damage that was done to that as part of the construction. It just couldn't be avoided. The contractor did make repairs. One of those repairs had to do with the culvert. The culvert that was there has obviously been there a very long time and is at the end of its service life. It's basically rusting out. When the contractor made the repair, they went to the best part of the culvert that they could find and made the connection, repaved the driveway, and, and left. We have since filed the contract out. However, the homeowner contacted the water and sewer department a few weeks ago and to alert us to the fact that there was essentially a sinkhole in the middle of this driveway. So we've had the engineering firm that helped us out do the inspection work, go out there, take a look at it, and the rest of the culvert is now collapsing. We've had the contractor out there to take a look at it. They do not feel it's their responsibility, because they didn't do any work in that area. There's no obvious damage to the pavement. Homeowner says that they had concrete trucks running up and down there and all that, but we have no proof. We, there's, there are no pictures. The inspection reports do not reflect any of that. The homeowner sent us pictures, but it really doesn't show anything. So there's nothing right now that we could go back on the contractor or the maintenance bond that we have with the contractor for the work. So, what I'm, what we did was we contacted the company that does those types of repairs for the water and sewer department. They have a water main break, and they disturb some asphalt areas. This is the company that they use to make those repairs, Asphalt Unlimited. They went out and looked at it. The quote that they had given the township for that work is $7,875 and zero cents. I've had the, our engineering firm that did the inspection do a quick estimate. Their estimate's quite a bit higher than that number. Their estimate was over $10,000. So, I guess I'm asking the board, you know, how we want to proceed with this. I guess my thought is, we just get, get it done and, and move on. The homeowner says this is our problem, that we tried to get them to participate at the time this was done, and they refused. So, be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Jim, did you, or expand on the fact that there's a neighbor that's also being affected?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. Yeah, the, the culvert is, obviously, water flows through the culvert, and so anything that's upstream of this area is slowly draining through the culvert, because the ground that used to hold that, where the area of the sinkhole up, is now in the pipe, or what used to be the pipe. So I got a call from the next-door neighbor complaining that during the big rain event a couple of weeks ago, you know, their yard was flooded out. So it is affecting other properties.
You did mean minor indentation in the earth, correct?
Yes, I'm sorry, I-
Gotcha.
Good point.
I move to request authorization to replace the drainage culvert at 2044421 Mile Road.
Support for that minor indentation.
Seconded by Mr. Kryzminski, to authorize the replacement of the drainage culvert. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have human resources, and this is to authorize the supervisor to execute the license and services agreement and business associate agreement with Accordware LLC on behalf of the township. Mr. Zorby.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I've been working closely with our benefits consultant for some time now to improve the efficiencies of our open enrollment process, and we started to work on this process last year. We were able to make some changes to effectuate an increase in the, or, excuse me, a reduction in the amount of paper we were using in this whole process. But unfortunately, time-wise, just didn't permit with the amount of changeover that's required. So, last year, we started working on the project for this year, which is a program that's through Accordware, BenExpress, that offers basically a completely optimized open enrollment process. There's, you know, our current system, although improved a little bit last year, is still manual and paper-based. All of our employees are required to, you know, write in their selections, that type of thing. And on the other end of it, on the receiving end of it, us, we're, we're generating the reports based on review of that, of that information. So the, the current program that's run allow, you know, increases the efficiency of tracker, tracking, and most importantly, record-keeping. It, it provides for a single entry, which obviously, it's input once, and you reduce the number of errors. Probably, pretty important is it provides us with immediate availability and to review the situation, review who's completed their enrollment package, who is not, so that we can follow up with them if the employee's having problems with it, that type of thing. It's all based on real-time situation. The program automatically captures enrollment elections, terminations, those type of things, completely eliminating the chances of us missing or not catching immediately a change in status where we can only go back so far with our providers to change that status. So, Mr. Decresi from MMA is here, as well as Matt Seamer from Accordware. They can answer any questions, technical questions about the operation of the, of the program if you'd like. But I'm asking that the supervisor be authorized to sign the services agreement. The business associate agreement is a standardized agreement that you would always have to sign anytime a company's involved with handling protected health information under HIPAA. So, but that goes along with it. So, with that, I'm asking, and the two are in the back if you have any questions for them, but with that, I'm asking for authorization for the supervisor to sign those two agreements.
Thank you. Any questions?
Madam Chair, just one. Tom, if there's any other area within your umbrella underneath the human resources that we should be updating as far as putting in computer-type of science, you know, I'd suggest start doing that because we can't be behind, you know, used paper and pen where we could be going online. So, with that, I'll go ahead and make that motion.
Could you just explain the training that we'll receive?
Matt, you want to fill us in on some of that? Just, Matt, come on up and kind of explain what, so, we're going to start this process like, like now, so that we're up and rolling at the time. So, can you give us an idea, Matt?
Sure. So, we're just based in Troy down the road a little bit. So, our team will offer a session of onsite training for the H R team here, as well as we offer a dedicated team on our side to support the H R folks here at the township. So, that team's available by phone, by web meeting, or by email as well.
Is the software pretty user-friendly for the most part? So that you could actually just do it?
I'm terribly biased. I've been toiling with, I'm one of the founders of the company.
Okay.
So, I've been toiling with this for 14 years, so I would, I would say yes, but like, I did a demo for a prospect this morning and I said, not only am I biased and think it's easy, actually, some of the employers we serve will back us up and say that there are folks who use this system, say it's easy to use also. It's all internet-based. Essentially, if you can get logged on to the technology, it's a wizard. You click on arrows and navigate your way through the benefits and make your choices.
We're, we fully understand this is going to be a big jump and we're preparing, that's why we're working on it now for the, for, towards the end of the year.
Well, my, the reason I was reaching out to you is because we just obtained new software and we're learning it and we have a bit of anxiety now as we, we've, we're getting it, but how do we get everyone else to get it? So, I just wanted to know what training plan you have.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to put that all in place and as we get it rolled out, we're going to also, we've, we're going to work on setting up a program, possibly have a kiosk upstairs, so that if people have a hard time, they can come here. This program does allow for to work with somebody from our department, sit down with them, work with them on it. For instance, if they're having trouble, we can get them on the phone. We can, we can go through that whole process.
Madam Chair, if I may. Matt, first of all, pull the microphone up to you. Okay, now, go ahead.
We'll remain actively engaged for as long as we're serving you. So, it's a continuous, ongoing situation of us being involved with each other.
Madam Chair, if I may, just a question for you. Do you have like visual aids that you'll be able to allow people to go ahead and look at it other than the kiosks that like this? Can I go online and look at it if I wanted to go out there?
Yes, you, yes, you may. So, during, say, an open enrollment period, or if there is a new hire who's eligible to enroll in their benefits, that's accessible via any computer with an internet connection and a web browser.
Okay. Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions?
No. I will support.
Is there a motion on the floor? Pardon me, Madam Supervisor.
He actually didn't get it out.
Oh.
Yeah, I was cut off.
Sorry.
I'll go ahead and make the motion on that.
And I'll support that motion.
Motion by Mr. Krasinski, supported by Ms. Nevers to authorize the supervisor to execute the agreement. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks.
Number 13A is a request to initiate the recruitment process for a part-time plumbing mechanical inspector. Mr. Sordi.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Maples had a resignation in his department and we need to fill that resignation for the part-time plumbing mechanical inspectors. I think everybody is well aware, we need to make sure that he's fully staffed in that regard and the inspection and, and help him however we can. So, with that, I'm asking for approval to begin our, to initiate the recruitment process for part-time plumbing mechanical inspector.
Thank you. Any questions?
No, Madam Chair. I'll go ahead and make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Krasinski.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Goodhue to authorize human resources to initiate recruitment process. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Next is Parks and Recreation and this is to purchase new equipment for the current public address and sound system at the rec center. Mr. DeGaro.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The Parks and Recreation Department is requesting permission to purchase new equipment for the P A system and sound system at the rec center. The current system was installed during the construction of the rec center in 2004. Fifteen years have passed and audio technology has obviously changed dramatically. Several components that we will be including are no longer working and what we are looking for are amplifiers, mixers, wireless microphone, and all the current tape players, we currently have tape players, would be turned into Bluetooth receivers. Place item on mitten, we received three bids ranging from $7,654.85 to $11,659. We are recommending that we purchase a system for pro audio and lighting for $7,654.85. This has been reviewed by the purchasing specialist. Recommendation is included in your packet and I am available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yes, Madam, Madam Chair. Sal, what's your update that you're going to have on this and what Jim, Jalius is going to, Jalius, I'm sorry, Jason's going to bring up on the item of updating everything within your parks and everything else. Will that cover you as far as upgrading everything in your department?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear at the beginning of your question.
Okay, here we go. You're covering just the inside of your building.
That's correct.
Okay. Will that update you to everything what you have within your building?
Yes, that will update us.
Okay. What Jason's going to bring up is going to be covering everything on the outside of the buildings. Will that cover everything there that you know of?
That I know of, yes. I believe so.
So, that'll bring you up. There'll be nothing that will be up in 2019 as far as all the technology and everything else.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair, if there's no other discussion, I would move on this one.
Motion by Mr. Krasinski.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Posey to authorize the purchase of the public address and sound system to pro audio and lighting. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. Motion carries.
Madam Chair, if I may. You said on the tape players, do you want to give those to the historical society by any chance?
It could very well happen. I have no idea what they're doing with them. I will check on that for you.
Next, we have facilities and grounds and this is a request to award the noxious weed grass cutting to Excel Landscaping. Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. Good evening, members of the board. I am here tonight to request authorization to award the contract for the noxious weed grass cutting to Excel Landscaping. This contract was written up for three years with an optional, with an option of two additional one-year extensions. The bid was placed on mitten with two quotes that were received. Excel Landscaping was the lowest bidder at $60 a cut for properties up to an acre and $80 a cut for properties over an acre. The weed and grass cutting is done at properties which exceed the height restriction as explained within the ordinance. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Anyone with questions?
Hearing on, Madam Chair, I would move on the, on this extension.
Motion by Mr. Krasinski.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Nevers, uh, Ms. Goodhue to award the grass weed cutting to Excel Landscaping. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. And the next one is to extend the sidewalk replacement bid to Luigi Fernandini and Sons Cement Company. Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. Tonight, I'm requesting authorization to extend the 2018 contract to replace the damaged sidewalks throughout the township to Luigi Fernandini and Sons Cement Company. The original bid was for one year with two one-year options and at this time, I'm asking to authorize the extension for one additional year. This place, this bid was placed on mitten last year with six bids submitted. Luigi Fernandini was chosen as the lowest qualified bidder at $5.09 per square foot and $5.99 per square foot for four-inch and six-inch concrete replacement respectively. He has agreed to keep his prices the same for this year. Due to the overwhelming response to this program, we were unable to complete the entire township last season. Upon approval, we would like to start around the middle of May, weather permitting, in the areas of 23 and Romeo Plank, moving north until we complete the northern sections, which at that time, would like to go back and pick up the ones that we missed in the south side of the township. I am available for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yes, Madam Chair, I have a couple of questions. Mr. Kelly, can you just remind us who's funding this project? This is a grant project or?
This is not a grant project.
Okay, it's township funding project, right? Okay. How much money's left? Because when I see the 509 square foot, 599 square foot, Luigi got this contract for one year with additional two-year, two-year options. How much money's left? Do you know that?
Approximately $300,000 from last year.
Okay, so, they would get half of that for this year? Because there's a two-year proposed extension? You said there's two one-year options.
Correct. So, right now, I was just asking for, just to extend that, to allow me to finish up the $300,000 and then possibly working into budget time to get a little bit more for the 2019.
Okay, good. Another question I have, your item says, and you just mentioned this, that you would like to start back at the sections in the southern portion of the township where issues had been identified. Besides just missing sidewalk, I don't, can you, first of all, can you explain that? And second of all, have you heard of any other issues that have been brought up in the southern end?
Yeah.
Besides just missing? Go ahead.
Yes, there was areas that we did miss. Our biggest thing when we were going through those, the ones we missed the most were the ones that had sunk, that were just, we just missed them. We didn't notify, we didn't see them. They were brought to our attention when it was raining and some of the residents had called with issues over the winter time when it froze, when the water froze. Those are the ones that we missed, quite a few of. The, we have had some residents that have called and notified us of issues around their house that we have missed also, in the south part of the town, well, actually township wide.
In some issues maybe, you know, anytime you repair a sidewalk, you're, you know, there could be some issues. But some residents have brought some issues forward to me. Now, a resident came forward to the microphone tonight, and you heard that, about how did the red Xs get placed in this program? Because who placed those Xs? Did every, did every X in our township, do you believe, got placed by a township employee? I thought it was a great question by a resident tonight.
Sure. The red X, the majority of the red Xs were placed by township of voice. We did get reports that there were Xs that were placed on concrete that were just by residents. But what we did to try to combat that is when we did go around and place the red Xs, we also kept a sheet for each individual house. So, the contractor was matching up the red Xs that were on the, on the sidewalks with the sheet that we gave them. If those two didn't match, he didn't do it.
Okay. I'm going to ask a question now, maybe, it may be fair or unfair at this point, but if was there any way to know if any resident did damage to their sidewalk before the Xs were replaced, to get theirs replaced first? And what I'm asking you right now, to be honest and fairness to me, is stuff that residents have forwarded to me and, and I think to other members, some of these questions, not all these questions. And, you know, how did we prepare for that? Is there a way for anybody who marked the X to tell if that was nature or somebody damaging their sidewalk on purpose? It's something a resident brought forward to me. Again, when, before I asked this question, I said it might be unfair to you to ask this question, but is there any way to safeguard against that or not?
I don't believe so. I mean, yeah, you could tell if somebody took a sledgehammer to a piece of concrete, I suppose, opposed to it just cracking naturally, possibly.
Okay. So, would they go back to the south end to fix their mistakes? Are we paying that?
It's not their mistakes. It was mistakes that were just, brought to our attention by residents, things that we had missed originally when we went and canvassed the neighborhoods. It was not mistakes done by the contractor.
So, you don't think there's been any mistakes done as far as leveling or, you know, damaging grass, you know, I, that's something that's, it's going to happen. I'm a homeowner, homeowner, you know, I, I do that when I landscape, but as far as maybe not leveling right or maybe not replacing all the sidewalks right and creating a new problem, have you seen any issues?
We've heard of issues of that and we've gone out and taken a look at them. Contractor's gone back and taken a look at them. There have been some that he has made adjustments to or redone for the ones that have been brought to our attention. The vast majority, though, I have not seen any issues.
Okay. Anyone else?
Madam Chair, I have a few questions. Jason, could you explain the criteria that needs to be met in order to get an X on the sidewalk?
So, we were looking for obvious damage to the sidewalks, if it was crumbling, if there was a trip hazard of about two inches and any cracks, something that would maybe impede the walking. Those were the big things that we were looking for.
And then, the staff that you have going around and surveying the property, are they trained by you?
Yes.
Okay. How many, how much, what's the percent of the project that is complete today?
I would say approximately 65%.
So, how many sidewalks would you say that actual slabs did you guys replace last year?
About 275,000 square feet.
How many complaints did you get?
A number.
I'm guessing you logged them?
Yeah, we do. A number, I, I can't tell you the number. I would say it would be under 50. We visited over 4,000 addresses last year. Out of that, maybe 50 people that we've heard complaints from.
And then, did you initiate this project?
Yes.
Okay. Did you compare to other communities or surrounding areas, how, how they handle their sidewalk repair programs?
I didn't know how others, yes.
Okay. I would like to dig into this a little bit deeper. As we can see, it's an expensive project. We've already spent $2.3 million, as it's already been indicated, and you're also stating that you're going to have to, you're going to need more money in order to complete the entire township. But at what point will it ever be done? Will it ever be complete? So, I see it just as a revolving door of money being spent. I would like us, as a board, to look into this. Mr. Sordi, is there an ordinance that you could assist us with? Where could, how can we go about putting some processes or something in place for the township as to, aboard, do we really want to continue this path? Do we want to have options whether the resident pays for it or the township?
Well, I think it's already been indicated it's not uncommon practice in the state of Michigan for a community to have an ordinance that requires the homeowners to be responsible for maintenance of their, of their sidewalks. So, certainly, I drafted those types of things in the past to be have, you know, that, it's not that difficult. Drafting of the ordinance is not that difficult.
Jason, if we were to not extend this contract in light of possibly looking into other options as a township as to how to address this, where does that leave you? You have $300,000, you think, remaining. You said it's 65% complete, what you have logged right now. How, what percent of that do you think you can complete with the $300,000 that you have budgeted for already?
Maybe another 20%, 25% possibly. We're getting into the north part of the south township where there's not as much that was logged in versus the south end of the township, just due to age.
So, if we were not to extend the contract, you would still be able to complete 90% of what you have now? Or does the contract expire at what day?
I suppose it would expire right now, in April. It's expired from last year because last year was just a one-year contract. So, at this point, if you did not do it, then I'm, I'm stopped at this point. So, everybody north of 23 Mile is not going to be getting anything done.
And those residents already have Xs, have had Xs put on their concrete?
Correct.
Um, will it take you the full, does it need a full year to complete what is existing? Could you do six months?
Yeah, I don't believe it's going to take a full year if we're just finishing between 23 and 26 Mile. No, I think we can get that done, weather permitting, obviously, but I would guess probably by August, September.
Okay. In all fairness to the residents that have looked at the red Xs on their concrete since last year and expecting the replacement, I think it would be fair for us to complete what we've started, but then not move forward with putting any new additional Xs on until we, as a township, have an ordinance in place that would give out some policies on how we're going to handle that moving forward. That would be my suggestion. Anybody else has anything?
Madam Chair, if I may. When you were at the southern end, before the two people were on the board, we had an ashmore problem. There were a lot of sidewalks that were upheaved, because when we were building some of the subs, we put in trees, and because of the disease that came in, uplifted a lot of the concrete. A lot of those were replaced by us, and the previous board, under John Brennan, we took down those trees because we felt we're the ones that put them in there. And so, it was our responsibility, so the rest of the board members know about this. That's how those, some of this concrete is being replaced because of that. A lot of people don't realize that, but that's the reason why. Okay. Now, secondly, as far as your, you have an individual that has done this in the past that's gone out to put the Xs on, onto the, and he's done this in other communities, correct? An older gentleman has helped you.
He has, yes, in the, yeah, he was helping me.
Okay, good. I would be in agreement, thank you, Jason. I would be in agreement with Ms. Posey is to continue to go ahead and replace the Xs that are out there and then do something and wait on a continual, on to see what's going to happen until we get something written. But the, just so that everyone's aware, there was a reason why we replaced some of these sidewalks, because of what had happened at some of the trees. That caused a lot of these problems, which a lot of people don't realize that. That's what it was. But anyway.
Madam Chair, if I may. Trustee Krasinski, in that case scenario, I believe in an ordinance we can include that if it's a circumstance where it was caused by something done by, planted by the township or things like that, it would be at the township's expense.
Exactly. And that's, and a lot of this, you know, again, it's just through knowledge and experience of us building all these subs, we allow that to happen, and then all of a sudden, a disease happens and all these trees go away.
Right.
And, you know, it's just something that has to happen.
Madam Chair? I'm just curious, is that a reason why we never put an ordinance into place beforehand? Do you know anybody?
I don't think so. I don't think anybody's ever, we didn't think about it at the time, when Brennan was, was the steward in doing all of this. It was just a common practice, okay, you know what? We put the sub in, we allowed that tree to be put in, because we didn't think anything was going to happen. And being good stewards as a township board, we just felt we'd just go ahead and replace it. It was never done by an ordinance. I know we're getting bigger and things are coming up, and maybe it's just, it's time to go ahead and do that. But I'm just giving you what the other side was and why we did what we did. And basically, that was it.
Just a question for Mr. Maher. Patrick, is there anything in our current ordinance that addresses sidewalks?
You know, other than construction standards, we don't necessarily have a replacement program, if that's what you mean.
We do have a property maintenance code that does require homeowners to shovel their sidewalks and put de-icer down and that kind of thing, but not the replacement work that we're talking about now.
Well, rather than create a whole new ordinance, can we modify the current one to include this?
Yeah, possibly.
We'd have to incorporate our current standards as far as maintenance for snow removal, that type of thing, into, into the current one.
Okay. Madam Chair, can I ask a question, please? In my subdivision, we had a lot of Xs on our sidewalks. All those Xs are gone. You have a master list that wasn't done yet, correct?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
So, Madam Chair, I just wanted to clarify something. Because a resident asked a question, and then I asked you a question. You said the majority of the red Xs were placed by township employees, and based on another question that was asked of you, those employees would have been trained by you. Who else placed red Xs and why, and who got selected? Because, you know, there's some controversy about this.
Sure.
Right? You know that, of why red Xs were placed and why maybe six slabs of sidewalk got replaced. Do you think that some of the sidewalks that got replaced with those red Xs were not, those red Xs were not placed by someone you trained as a township employee?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
So, the red Xs that I was referring to, when I, most of the red Xs, we had received reports that homeowners were putting red Xs on their, on their own slabs of sidewalk. So, we would, the contractor would look at the master list, he would look at the Xs. If they didn't match, he didn't do it. He went off of the paperwork went, was what he was going off of. The red Xs were just a secondary...
Okay, so, all the red Xs that should be replaced were put there by township employees?
Correct.
On a master list?
On a master list, correct.
There could be other red Xs among the township that were put there by others, right?
Homeowners, right.
Okay. And, and, and our contractor is able to put those two together, correct?
Yeah, yep.
Do you know what I'm saying? Because, you know, if you're doing one house, right, and a contractor, then there's a next house, they have red Xs, they're able to say, because, you know, contractors are, or anybody is, okay, I'm going to do that. They may be in good faith, thinking I'm just going to do those two also.
No.
Because I, I've been hearing that, you know, some sidewalks may have been replaced that shouldn't have been, or were in a lot better shape than others, you know, and I'm sure you've been hearing this too, and gotten some emails about this.
Sure. Yeah, the sidewalks that were in question on a few of these different properties, those were the sidewalks specifically that were holding water that we would have never caught. So, unless the residents called us and told us, hey, you guys are doing stuff in our subdivision, take a look at these a little closer, here's some pictures, this is what happens when it rains, we have flooding over here, we would go back and mark them and then add them to the master list. But in the event that the contractor showed up at a house, and on the paperwork for the neighbor's house, maybe he didn't have paperwork for the neighbor's house, but they were already marked red, he wasn't replacing them, because he knew he wasn't going to get paid for them.
And we've responded to every one of those emails where homeowners gave you pictures of the rain.
I would say we've responded to the majority, if not all of them, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Any one else?
Madam Chair, hearing no more discussion, then I would move to extend the contract in order to cover the balance of whatever he has in the budget on that, and then going forward, that we go ahead and look at getting an ordinance or updating, or maybe adding to an ordinance that's out there. But we have to fix what we have out there.
Motion by Mr. Krasinski?
Support.
Supported by Ms. Nevers to award the sidewalk replacement bid to Luigi Fernandini and Sons.
Madam Chair, can I request another roll call vote?
Sure. Roll call, Ms. Posey?
Trustee Krasinski?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Busano?
No.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Clerk Posey?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next, we have a request to award the surveillance system upgrade. Mr. Gully?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Finally, tonight, I'm asking for authorization to award the video surveillance upgrade to Presidio in the amount of $218,783.20. This bid was placed on mitten with four bids received. For this project, an evaluation team was assembled and proposals were scored based on the evaluation criteria provided in the RFP, with Presidio scoring the highest. This project will include the replacement of approximately 100 cameras throughout Town Hall, the Recreation Center, Media Building, Senior Center, and in addition to the replacements at the Water and Sewer Building, we will be adding cameras to their, to that building's yard. The new cameras will be all digital, upgrading from the analog system that we currently have in place, allowing for better images and camera functionality. The fire station cameras will remain the same as they were upgraded to digital cameras approximately five years ago and are still working with no issues. Those cameras will be compatible with the video management system that will be installed. This bid also includes a new video management system for all buildings, new servers, licensing labor, and network switches. The new system will allow for better video retention throughout all buildings, and it's capable of running on mobile devices. Currently working to get this system incorporated with the new public safety building, so that the same platform would exist throughout all township buildings. Just a side note, this camera replacement will not be included, or the parks will not be included in this. I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
Madam Chair, I would just like to mention how important it is to update our surveillance cameras. I had an employee this past winter that slipped and fell on the back. And in order to try and review it for any even HR or anything like that, we didn't have footage for it, due to the cameras not being operational at the time. So, it's very important for us on public safety and for employees as well, and for HR and reporting.
Madam Chair, if I, if I may, just one question. Jason, this covers everybody, then? Buildings, grounds, Jerry, everybody?
It covers all the buildings with the exception of the parks.
With the, okay, exception of the parks. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair, if there's no discussion, I make a motion toward the surveillance system upgrade to Presidio in the amount of $218,783.20.
Motion by Mr. Krasinski?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Posey to award the surveillance system upgrade to Presidio. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Fire Department request to purchase a 2020 KME Super Duty Mini Pumper. Chief Phillips?
Madam Supervisor, members of the board, I'm requesting board approval to purchase a 2020 KME Super Duty Mini Pumper. The apparatus will replace our current 2008 KME Chevrolet 5500 Mini Pumper that's housed at Station 4. Apparatus will respond to medical calls, vehicle accidents, and fires, and it'll be licensed EMS non-transport vehicle, will carry the jaws of life, all required medical, medical equipment, and fire-related equipment. The apparatus I'm recommending for purchase is similar to the mini pumppers that were previously purchased and are currently in service. The cab and chassis will be a 2020 Ford F-550, has four-door cab that will seat four firefighters, is four-wheel drive. We currently have four of the Ford 550s in service, three are mini pumppers, and the fourth is the air supply and the rapid intervention truck. Based on feedback received from both full-time and paid-on-call personnel, several changes have been made to the body that we believe will make their jobs easier and provide for additional protection to the pump panel. The Ford 550s have held up well, and it is currently the only option that we have available as Ford is the only manufacturer that meets the National Fire Protection Association Fire Apparatus rollover standard. The apparatus will be outfitted with a fire pump capable of providing 1,250 gallons of water per minute. The apparatus I'm proposing to replace is a 2008 Chevy 5500 four-door four-wheel-drive Mini Pumper with a fire pump capable of providing 1,000 gallons per minute. The truck currently has 152,000 miles on it and is anticipated to have at least 170,000 by the time the new Mini Pumper is received. The apparatus has served us well, but it is in need of being replaced in 2008, when this was purchased. I anticipated replacing it after seven years. However, I've since adjusted the replacement life to at least 10 years, and the mini pumppers allow us to increase the lifespan of our main fire engines from 15 years to 20 years. The main fire engines only respond to fires and major incidents, and the main wear and tear is placed on the mini pumppers. They're lighter and they're easier to maneuver in the subdivisions that we have. Over the past several months, specifications for the apparatus were developed, and an 84-page RFP was placed on mitten on March 11th. Bids were due on March 28th, and the bid opening was held at Town Hall immediately following the 10:00 AM deadline. One bid was received. The bid was submitted by KME Fire Apparatus in the amount of $345,237. The required bid bond of 10% was submitted with the bid as required in the specifications. A total of one exception was submitted to the specifications by KME, and that was to the lifetime warranty on the frame rails of the chassis. The specifications called for a lifetime warranty, however, Ford limits the warranty to 36 months. I have no objection to their exception. The entire bid process was handled by the purchasing specialist, and I've attached her letter stating the process meets the township policy. If approved, a pre-construction conference will be held at the factory to review and confirm the specifications. At the conclusion of that meeting and upon final signature on the build print, KME will provide to the township the performance bond and the total amount of the apparatus as required in the specifications. In addition to the pre-construction conference, a mid-inspection and a final inspection will be conducted prior to the apparatus being delivered. Per the bid documents, delivery will be no greater than 150 days after receipt of the chassis of the manufacturer, and no greater than 240 days from the day of the signing of the contract. The replacement is included in the proposed fire improvement budget, and there will be no funds expended until the apparatus has been delivered to the township and final acceptance has taken place. Therefore, I'm requesting your approval to purchase one 2020 KME Super Duty Mini Pumper at a total cost of $345,237, and authorize myself to sign the final build print and contract at the conclusion of the pre-construction conference. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
You're going to sell the old one, Chief?
We will, once we take delivery of the new one.
Okay. Any questions?
Madam Chair, hearing, I'll move on, I'll make a motion to go ahead and purchase the new 2020 KME Super Duty Mini Pumper.
Motion by Mr. Krasinski?
Support.
Seconded by Ms. Goodhue to purchase the Mini Pumper as requested. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a request to pay, construction pay estimate number five, and this is sanitary sewer cleaning, CCTV investigation, and FCIPP. Mr. Wanglin?
Thank you, Supervisor Dunn and board members. Tonight, Water and Sewers in front of you requesting pay cert number five. This will be for DIS. This is in the amount of $19,611.12, and this is the contractor currently finishing up the cleaning and TVing program that we have ongoing right now. This project is nearing completion. We are recommending approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Seeing none, I make a motion to pay construction pay estimate number five, sanitary sewer cleaning, CCTV investigation, and FCIPP.
Motion by Ms. Posey?
Support.
Supported by Ms. Goodhue to pay the construction estimate number five as requested. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. And the next one is award sanitary sewer cleaning and CCTV investigation. Mr. Wanglin?
Thank you, Supervisor Dunn and board members. And what this project is, is a request to award the next round of cleaning and TVing, which will take place this summer. This project was placed on mitten, six bids were received, we interviewed the three low bids, put them through a series of questions. The interview panel consisted of the Water and Sewer Department, engineering, and then the consulting firm of AEW. And all three of these low bidders were asked the same questions, and it is our recommendation that we go with bidder number three, which is Pipe Tech Infrastructure Services in the amount of $373,187.50. This, this whole process was reviewed by the, by City Carnes, and we are recommending approval. And obviously, in the memo, we state here reasons for not accepting the low bidder and the number-two bidder as well. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Wanglin?
Seeing none, I'll make a motion to award sanitary sewer cleaning and CCTV investigation.
Support.
Motion by Ms. Posey, seconded by Mr. Krasinski to award the sanitary sewer cleaning and CCTV investigation as requested. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries.
Thank you, board.
And, thank you. Number 21 is a request to approve McComb Township Wireless Facilities in the Wright of Way Ordinance. Mr. Assorti?
Madam Chair, members of the board, you have in your packet a proposed ordinance that I'm requesting your approval on tonight as, by way of background. Last fall, the FCC began a number, began to issue a number of rulings regarding wireless broadband deployment. To give you an idea, to summarize what it is, one of those rulings is, the title of the ruling is, "In the Matter of Accelerating Wireless Broadband Deployment by Removing Barriers to Infrastructure Investment." So, I think that gives you a sense of what's going on. They want to remove the local community's ability to control some of these things. There's a number of rulings, many of them 150, 200 pages long, about what you can and cannot do relative to wireless communications information. So, many of those rulings indicated that the local communities would have to have their aesthetic standards in place by April 15th of this year, although there have been other reports out from the FCC indicating that there would be additional time and that we could, in fact, right now, as it stands, is that the FCC is advising that if you don't have them in place, continue to work on them, because they're probably going to accept them. Now, within conjunction with those FCC rulings, our state, like they did with the marijuana ordinance, or the marijuana, excuse me, marijuana statute was put in place by the voters, but by the Paid Leave Act. This was another act that was, the Wireless Communications Facility Deployment Act was put into place during the lame duck section and really kind of handcuffed us from a time perspective. We still technically would have some time to create an ordinance under the statute, but I'm going to explain to you why I think it's important that we do this right now. Basically, what that statute does is it allows the local community, the FCC and the state government have removed basically our, when I say our, the township's ability to control devices that are placed within the public right of way. So typically, if someone's going to put something up, we have some control regarding aesthetic size, impact, and other things. The act does allow for us to have certain standards, for instance, require construction permits, to do certain things like require indemnification and maintenance programs, those types of, so it does give us some authority over those things, but it's removed the general authority that we've had. It does also permit the aesthetic requirements that are involved under the FCC. I don't want to go into great detail about the aesthetic requirements, but basically what the process is to get approved through the FCC, the provider would have to assure the FCC that they've met all the local requirements. So there's what they're referring to as a shot clock provision, meaning they only have 90 days. So once they put their application with the FCC, they only have 90 days. If the FCC doesn't approve it, it becomes approved. So we can slow things down in that process through the FCC. I'm not suggesting we need to slow things down, but we have that ability if they're not in compliance with our standards, and that time period stops if they haven't met all of our requirements. It's a great concept for us to put in aesthetic standards now. The problem is, this technology is advancing so quickly. I just read something again yesterday now that indicates that a new product has come out. As you can imagine, at the MTA conference, a lot of people were talking about this, about the different things that are out there and what's going on. These are things anywhere from locations on individual telephone poles to small antennas that might be placed on top of streetlights. One indication is that AT&amp;T is even possibly looking at hanging these transmitters from the power, you know, from their lines themselves. So we want to make sure that those types of things are not in somebody's front window, you know, or that type, you know, and that there's some consistency. We don't want lights blinking on whatever. I've drafted an ordinance that takes full advantage of all the things we're permitted to do under the statute as far as permitting, maintenance, indemnification, and those types of things. I've also gone and spoken with several other communities and looked at the aesthetic standards. I talked with Mr. Maher about it. We both feel that it's more important to put something in place now. This may be a work in progress that as the, you know, as the industry develops and we know a little bit more about what they're going to put out there, that we can adjust our aesthetic standards a little bit more. So I'd be happy to answer any other questions that you have. To give you an idea, the way that it was explained to me is that the basic concept of this is the router in your home, right, that puts out 5G. This is going to be the same thing in the community. They're going to find places throughout the community to place these things, both so that we have wireless service basically everywhere and to tie into autonomous cars so that we can start to get into that process. There's a lot of concern about, a lot of things out there about the medical effects of blasting 5G through the whole thing. I'm not going to get into all that, and that ordinance certainly doesn't deal with that. But I want, the reason I'm proposing this tonight, I have been working on this for some time, but I've been advised now that a few communities, they're already starting to put some things up. Not clear what they are, but one community indicated that AT&amp;T is already putting small antenna on a few light poles. Sounds like for testing, but it's coming, so we want to get something in place.
Madam Chair, if I may ask a question. Section 6, Tom, says pre-construction document filing requirements. It appears several documents have to be filed with the township clerk before commencing construction.
Right.
Who's monitoring that? I, who's giving me the documents and then?
Well, so Verizon, AT&amp;T, and whoever would have to do this, provide this information to you, and then get certification for us that has been complied with.
Then do they, I didn't mean to, but do they request the certification from us?
Yes.
And then you would check with us to see if we've received these documents?
Right.
Okay, that's what I wanted to.
Yeah, and then, because they're going to need that to go back to the FCC to get their approval to put it on there. So I try to do it so the burden's on them to do the work, not us to do the tracking.
Gotcha.
Anyone else?
I'll follow Ms. Posey's lead if she's going to go ahead and make the motion on the ordinance.
I'll move that we approve the Macomb Township wireless facilities and right-of-way ordinance.
Motion by Ms. Posey.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Krasinski, to approve the right-of-way ordinance for wireless facilities. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Now we're at the public comments portion. This is on non-agenda items. If you wish to speak to the board, please come to the podium, state your name. Remember, you have a three-minute time limit.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Western. The last Macomb Township Planning Commission meeting, held in this room on April 2nd, ran for two and a half hours. There were a couple of dozen residents in attendance for this meeting, which was essentially a three-agenda item meeting. And these meetings often have large crowds, and for many residents, it's their first up-close contact with township government. In order to attend, people are having to inconvenience themselves, leave work early, skip meals, arrange childcare, bring their children, whatever they have to do. Some residents have physical challenges that make attendance even more difficult. These meetings are very interesting, as much of the essential work of the township takes place in the committee meetings, the planning commission, and the ZBA. There is also a great deal of education and information that is transmitted that goes on there, thanks to the staff, who provide things like slide programs, and the committee members, who take a lot of time with residents and have thoughtful discussion with their interaction with the residents during these meetings. I don't need to tell you that many items come before planning commission multiple times as they work their way around. The residents who attend then try to take the information they've learned at the meeting and convey it to their neighbors through conversation, or convey it through social media, and I don't need to tell you how well that goes. How much better it would be for everybody if the videotapes of these meetings, which you already have, these meetings are videotaped already, but how about uploading them online and onto the government access channel, and people were able to get this information firsthand? And these people who are racing out to see these meetings just because they want the information firsthand could then go on the internet and watch, or look at them on the government access channel. Would be so much nicer for the residents, wouldn't cost you a whole lot, and would help with the education. I will mention Clinton Township, as well as other local communities, do have these meetings online, and some of them are live streaming the meetings as well. It would be a great educational service and convenience for the residents, and would frankly show off a little bit, because there's a lot of really good work that's going on in those meetings. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening. Frank Kuzmata, 16188, Jenny Drive. Madam Chair, members of the board, I've come before the board in the past and indicated what my understanding of the Republican mantra was when I grew up. Same or better services, more efficient government, lower taxes. The question I have is on the issue of the sidewalks. Why wasn't the question that Ms. Posey asked before, was asked before $2.3 million was spent? There's two hats that members of the board can put on. I was just musing about this while I was sitting in the, because I was writing down all the comments that you guys discussed among yourselves when it came to your conclusion. If you're wearing a red hat, the individual property owner would be paying for that expense, either through an ordinance, or through a special tax district, or perhaps through an association assessment, if the associations in each subdivision were to take on that expense. If you're wearing a blue hat, well, just have the township pay it. It's easier to deal with the township than to an individual association or an individual homeowner, who may be trying to extract as much value as possible for that good or service. My calculation, 275,000 square feet at 509 was $1.4 million. And this has happened before. The rec center supposedly was, when I understood it to be first proposed, was supposed to be self-sufficient. It was supposed to run on the monthly fees charged by the township for that service, for membership, so to speak. But today, there was an approval of a sound system for there. Why wasn't that just passed on to those users? Why do they have $5 loss per month rates than at Planet Fitness, for example? Is it because we are subsidizing that facility? Taxpayers that don't even use it? Same thing with the lighting issue that Mr. Trustee Krasinski mentioned about where does that end? Everyone, the board passed that, but again, is it better to have a special tax district and not burden the taxpayers who may or not, may not, may or may not be involved in certain areas of the township? I think that you need to get back to strict fiscal conservative principles in your decision-making and put on that red hat when voting. Thank you.
Anyone else? Very well, then we will move on to trustee's comments.
Yes, Madam Chair. Just want to start out, Ms. Western, thank you for coming up and speaking both times. Sometimes we agree, sometimes we agree to disagree. I do appreciate today especially that you brought up, first of all, I want to address your second comment about planning commission meetings. I agree, many communities have that, and put it online. We touted at State of the Township how free YouTube is, and how everything is free on YouTube. Again, we don't always agree on everything, but I agree with your two comments tonight. I do appreciate that you brought the fact up about how red Xs were placed, where they were placed. I still have an issue personally. I didn't want to put Mr. Gulliver under stress about how Mr. Boochie sidewalks got replaced under this program nine months after his indictment, fully, okay? I would like to know who placed those red Xs and why, and, you know, I know he's still a resident, but, you know, there's some issues there. I hope he's still not pulling strings in our township some way. So thank you for bringing up on how the red Xs were placed in our township. Frank, Frank's leaving. Thank you again for speaking, Frank. I want to address everybody for coming tonight. I tried to put on the red hat as much as possible, believe me. Okay, thank you. But one thing I do want to point out tonight is, I believe in many issues, sidewalks, cellphone ordinances, marijuana ordinances, the importance that many of our board members placed in ordinances, because next week, we are discussing, again, a much-delayed, much-roadblocked issue of ethics ordinance. We agree that ordinances carry weight, and we need an ethics ordinance in this township. So I am very excited that this board agrees that ordinances are important, and next week, I hope we fully go forward with an ethics ordinance. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair, if I may, I'd like to thank the Sanders Brothers for coming up. You know what? All the years I've been doing this, first time, first time we had a double hitter. So who's the oldest guy?
We are identical twins, but I'm technically older by eight minutes.
Eight minutes, okay. I just wanted to make sure. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anyone else? Very well, then we will move on to treasurer's comments.
Yes. Today, the settlement of the 2018 tax rule, as well as the delinquent tax rule, was delivered to the county treasurer. The summer taxes are comprised of school taxes for the four school districts, as well as the intermediate school district and the community college, state education, and the county tax, and the county tax, and cover a fiscal period of 7/1 of 18 through 6/30 2019. The winter taxes are comprised of township operating taxes, county taxes, voted-on tax millages, and school taxes for two of our four districts. This covers the fiscal period of January of 19 through December 31 of 2019. The total amount of taxes billed for 2018 was $114,57,560.92. The amount collected was $112,190,714.67. The total amount delinquent was $1,866,846.25. The delinquency is approximately 1.6 of our total taxes billed. I want to thank our residents for helping us remain fiscally responsible. I also want to thank my full-time staff, Sharon, Melissa, and Carl, as well as my temporary person, Nancy, for all their hard work in processing over $112 million in tax payments, along with the approximate $30,000 quarterly water payments that we handle. And that doesn't even include answering telephones and working at the counter. But our staff works really hard, and we are, I feel that we're very efficient in processing those, and like I said, our amount of delinquencies that we turned over this year is just a slight bit larger, like 0.02% higher than last year, but it's still a great amount of delinquencies. I'm very proud to. And we asked today, we were the 10th township or community to turn in our role this year. So, you know, there's 16 more to go, so we were doing pretty good. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk's comments.
Yesterday, we mailed 785. Write that down, Roger.
I am.
No reason mail-in ballots for the May 7th special election. I just want to emphasize, only the residents located in the New Haven School District are eligible to vote in this election. If you're uncertain, if you live in the New Haven School District, please feel free to contact my office, and we will assist you with your district. That's all I have.
Madam Chair, if I have a question for the clerk. How many total have we, have you sent out? Do you know?
Total, we sent out 785 ballots.
That's it?
Yeah, there's only 5,413 voters in the New Haven School District. It's only 8%.
Oh, okay, thank you.
It's very small.
Wow.
It's a very small election.
I thought it'd be more. All right, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Certainly. Supervisor's comments. I just wanted to remind everyone that we're having the workshop for the ethics ordinance next Wednesday night. I'll put that on your calendar. The other thing I want to caution all of the residents out there to be very, very, very careful. You may have heard this on the news, but yesterday we had a fatal accident on Card Road, and a motorist hit a cement truck head-on. They're big enough that everybody should be able to see them, so be extra careful out there. Those phone calls and text messages can wait until you get home. I'm not saying that that's what happened, but it, how can you miss a cement truck? That's all I have for this evening. We have three items to be discussed in closed session. We need to make a motion to go into closed session.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to go into closed session.
Motion. Motion by Mr. Krasinski.
Support.
Seconded by Ms. Smith to enter into closed session. Ms. Posey, I'm sorry.
No, Goodhue.
Oh, Ms. Goodhue. Okay, call the roll, please.
Trustee Krasinski.
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue.
Yes.
Trustee Bosino.
Yes.
Trustee Nevers.
Yes.
Trustee Smith. Posey, yes, and Supervisor Dunn.
Yes. We are adjourned to closed session. We have returned from closed session. In regards to item number twenty-two, are there any motions?
Madam Chair, this item was for informational purposes only.
Thank you. In regards to item number twenty-three, are there any motions?
Madam Chair, authorization to sign agreement and release.
Motion by Mr. Krasinski.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Smith. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. In regards to item twenty-four, are there any motions?
Madam Chair, I, I move to approve the terms and conditions of the consent to judgment or other appropriate documentation.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Posey. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. That concludes the business for this evening. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Posey.
Support.
Seconded by Mr. Bosino. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries and we are adjourned.